The meeting of the, the special meeting and budget committee meeting of Wednesday, May 29th that were, Madam Clark, would you call the roll, please?
Peter Talbot.
Here.
Jim Janks.
Here.
Dina Allard.
Here.
Patricia Kramer.
Here.
Fiona Pearson.
Here.
John Walsh.
Here.
Greg Wolfe. David Bellimer.
Here.
And John Mylone.
Yeah.
For his presence.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Couple of quick items before I turn the, the meeting over to Mr. Janks, our Budget Chair. The first is the acceptance and appropriate, or I'm sorry, the first is a call for a public hearing on amendments to the building fees ordinance, section three dash three. Ms. Allard, please.
Be it resolved that the town council approves resolution number zero five two nine two four dash one. Be it resolved that the town council will hold a public hearing at six thirty P M. On Thursday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty four, in Council Chambers Town Hall, eighty-four South Main Street, Cheshire, Connecticut, to consider amendments to the building fees ordinance, section three dash three.
We have a motion, do we have a second? All in favor? Motion passes unanimously if those present. Brings us to item number four, acceptance and appropriation of forty thousand seven hundred dollars in PEGPISHA grant fund award for the replacement and upgrade of some of the town's current live broadcasting and audio visual equipment. Be resolved that the town council approves resolution zero five two nine two four dash two. Be it resolved that the town council accepts and appropriates the forty thousand seven hundred dollars PEGPISHA grant fund award for the replacement and upgrade of some of the town's current live broadcasting and audio visual equipment. And be it further resolved that the town council authorizes Town Manager Sean M. Kimble to execute any and all necessary documents associated with this funding.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Discussion.
Can we give it just a brief overview? Would that be all right?
So, as councils aware, we saw it, a much higher number, one hundred and forty-three thousand eight-ten. Probably a full suite of potential upgrades, audio visual for Town Hall, Council Chambers. We were approved at forty thousand seven hundred dollars, just still the highest amount awarded this PEGPISHA round. We have, just earlier today, we were receiving quotes back and forth for a revised scope. And I was very pleased to see it's still going to accomplish, I think, a lot of what we were intending to have improved up there. Namely, two large, so replacing the, the drop down screen projection system with two large TVs on either side for the audience, and then two large TVs up by Council dais, so that there's not the back and forth where there's only one TV being pivoted. But, very importantly, the ability to stream directly from the feed into the feed that Mike Solomon broadcasts out to everybody else, so there's not a camera viewing the TV or the projector, but actually the live feed going right into the system. So those two are priorities of the project. Other, audio and visual, and then switch gear improvement that I'm not qualified to explain. But I know that, you know, consistently, the ability both for folks at home to view what's being presented better, and then the folks like yourselves in the room, who, and anyone using the room, to be able to have those four TVs now positioned in a better way, to really upgrade the audio visual project. So, comes in at forty thou, again, just over, it's forty thousand seven hundred for the grant, in order to have the TVs the right size. I think it's, we saw today, it was an extra.
Forty-one thousand.
It was forty-one thousand, an extra thousand dollars to have the TVs the right size. Instead of smaller versions, and we can cover that for the operating budget. So, it'll cover ninety-eight percent of the project, so that's it.
Questions? When do you have a plan, this plan to take effect, or when do you, when you have all the equipment? Is it going to be by the fall, or something?
That, I didn't see the quote today, Noel, did you?
Yeah, so it's, I believe it's an eight to twelve week before the equipment arrives. So it, it will probably need some time until it's installed.
Okay.
So, just like, yes, Sean, what, what are you doing now? Explain the camp, uh, the TVs, again?
So, there's a couple of options. One, when the consultant came out to review, his recommendation was two TVs on either side of the room facing the audience, potentially high up, and then tilted to the, to the, so almost to the ceiling and looking out. So if you were in the audience and you wanted to see.
They'd be off to the side, or in the middle?
They would be off to the side.
Off to the side.
Like where they are now?
Right, you can't drop it in the middle because it interferes with the camera angle for the Council dais, anybody up there. So, two on the side, and then kind of where the one is now, potentially, or maybe the next bay, in between the next windows over closer to the dais, would be two that are really more dedicated for those participants up at the dais. So if, if a budget presentation's going on, or a meeting like upstairs, folks, depending on where they're sitting in the room, can look at the TV closest to them. But it's all streaming the same thing at the same time. That's the idea. Unfortunately, it's all covered by this, by this grant, the PEGPISHA program.
One, one more thing, because I know you've had an issue with when Board of Ed is having a meeting or something, and Mike's not available to do ours, or somebody else. Is, is that possible to get a, look for a grant to get somebody who will be basically the town council video person? Because I know there's times where, you know, some, Barnett or Noel, if somebody's turning, or you are turning it on and turning it off, and it's just.
Yes.
Things don't get recorded sometimes?
Sure, so actually, just last couple of weeks, we interviewed, so as you know, we now have a series of minutes clerks, and we had a solicitation out for minutes clerks, and we had one to apply who actually has audio visual experience and was looking for part-time work on the side. So really, just as of this week, I think we're finalizing the agreement.
The contract, yeah?
The contract, that he could be the backup to Mike Solomon when he's not available. He's covering the, you know, a play or something at Highland. This individual could come, maybe they're not, for a council meeting, they wouldn't be here to take the minutes. Obviously Noel would be taking the minutes, but they can be there to operate the equipment, either in this room or upstairs.
And that'll come out of that operating budget?
Right, we have a minutes clerk budget now that we grouped them all into the town council's budget.
That's good.
Two years ago, yep.
Anything else? Seeing that, I'll call for a vote, all those in favor. Motion passes unanimously by those present. And with that, it brings us to item number five, the proposed fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five capital expenditure plan. And I will turn the meeting over to Mr. Janks, our Budget Chair.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. So we're here tonight to talk about capital budget, of course, first of, I hope, we'll only do three meetings. But we'll see. Sean just informed me that we have about sixty capital projects in the first year, potentially. Tonight, we're going to cover, we hope we're going to cover public property, WPCD, market rec, and public works. Sean, I think you said you want to start with WPCD.
Okay, well, I'll start, if it's okay, I'll, I'll start with just a very brief, very brief overview and explanation. Again, this is, I know it's the first capital budget experience for, for a few folks at the table. And I just wanted to give kind of just a high level overview. First of all, to orient us, in the vertical book, to page one thirty-nine is the section, it's actually got its own tab, capital expenditure budget, of the five tabs there. Will be the bulk of the material that we'll go through, really page by page. We won't do too much presenting on the screen unless there's imagery or a particular picture we need to show you to represent the project being done. But, just briefly, and maybe simplistically, capital budget versus operating budget. So, the capital budget projects, these are individual distinct project efforts that are not funded through the operating budget. So they are intended to cross multiple fiscal years if needed, they're project-based accounts. And when you make an approval, and as you'll see, we have five years of proposed projects here. That's our capital improvement plan, a five-year plan. At the end of this process, the first year will be the only year that you actually approve and authorize to proceed and, and appropriate. The other years, two through five, are more of a guide and a planning document. But, as I've said before, they are also critically important as we start to plan what is our capacity for the next few years. And also, very importantly, and to very importantly to the gentleman next to me, we factor all five years in as we're doing our debt projections. So each of these projects, and there are some exceptions, and I'll explain that in just a second, but most of these projects are funded with borrowing. And so while we're approving the projects now, you're ultimately paying for them, in nearly every case, for the next twenty years, because we tend to borrow for twenty years. So, again, other sources of revenue can and often do include grants. And you'll see those noted and footnoted in each of the projects. And then there's a smaller amount, although we wish it was a larger amount, we talked about that during the operating budget, of what we call CNR, those are capital and non-recurring projects. Those are really, I, I refer to those as cash for capital. We're not borrowing for those projects, we're funding them with cash. We have a system that many towns do of sort of paying ourselves back into that fund over five years, sort of self-borrowing, if you will. And we fund that, as you recall, in the operating budget with a line of one point one million dollars each year. Last year, that was one point eight million, we're trying to keep that number. The higher that number is, the less we have to borrow for projects. But the more that we're impacting on the operating budget, the mill rate and tax dollars. So, always a balance. But again, just very simplistically, you know, these projects, think about them as projects that extend. In many cases, you'll have an approval, design work will start, bidding will take place. These are projects that, sure, you could fund them in an operating budget, but it would be hard with some because they won't be complete, you'd have to roll projects over into a following year or encumber funds. And in many, in many cases, these projects can last four, five, six years before they're actually completed. Most of them, we try to have done sooner than that. But there can be a variety of reasons where you're waiting for grants to come through, or you're waiting for a second amount of money to come through, or whatever it is. Things change within projects, and you'll see some projects that stay for some time. I do have, again, in the interest of time, I won't spend a lot of time on it, I do have, and I was requested from, actually, a number of council members had asked me for sort of a status update of recent, recently approved, what's on the books right now is active capital projects, looking back over the last few years, I know a number of you have asked me. I prepared a spreadsheet today, which I will pass out now. I don't think we've spent a ton of time on it right now, tonight, we can do that maybe at the next meeting. Because I think you could really get into each one. But I think it's illustrative of, of how much we have, especially over the last couple of years, of approved projects, and they're in varying states of that, that those funds being spent. One important note, and a very frequently asked question, is, you know, when you see projects on here, especially if they're from twenty-two, twenty-one, or twenty-twenty, do they represent dollars in an account somewhere? And they, they really don't, right? There, there are authorizations to spend. So they're as good as, as being spent from an accounting standpoint, and our tracking of what our future debt is going to be. But should a project come in, as they very often do, under budget, we, and our town staff is very diligent about, you know, of course, we're going out to bid, and sometimes we overestimate on these capital budgets because you don't want to have to come back a second time. But when there's funding available, we make the most educated guess we can, but we, we, when there's additional funds available, authorization available, doesn't mean it's going to be spent or even should be spent, right? If the project comes in under budget, there's a process of deauthorization. And every year, Jim reviews these projects with department heads and say, says, hey, can this project be closed out? What's the status of this effort? Some are easier to kind of identify than others, the project's clearly over. Some, they're still residual, there's a round two happening or something else is going on. So, again, we won't spend a lot of time tonight, but I think for future meetings, this is just helpful to see what's already out there and active, because I know we're going to spend a lot of time deciding just how much can we afford to move forward this budget year, you know, all things considered. So, I will pass this out. And then I think, maybe with that, happy to answer any kind of introductory questions, but otherwise, we can dive right into the future projects, so.
I just have one introduction question.
John, and then Patricia. Go ahead, John.
Sean, I.
Yes.
I know we have significant debt associated with, with the schools coming up. Does that affect any decisions we're going to make relative to these independent capital commitments?
Yeah, I mean, I think it certainly, it certainly does. I mean, if, if you recall the budget presentations, and there's some slides I can point to in this book, actually, you know, our future debt service projections are, are significant. Again, it's, it's a multitude of factors, the biggest being the two new schools. But, as I was saying before, those projections in years two through five of the plan, so those aren't projects we've committed to yet, but we've put them and endorsed them in the plan as likely to happen. But the more of those that stay in, and that Jim has to model and assume they're going to both be approved, and then that we're going to borrow for them, they're compounding that future debt service. And I think, as you saw, we, we had debt service as a percent of overall budget, all the way at the lowest level it has been, maybe five, you know, three or four years ago, it was around five point eight, five point nine percent of our operating budget. We like to keep that number, rating agencies like to see that number in the ten percent range, barring significant efforts, like building new schools. If you saw our projections, we're moving up into the fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen percent range, mostly because of the schools, but also because of all of the other capital lines that we have. So, yeah, it's all intertwined. I mean, I think the other thing to look for, and I think the trend that we've seen, and I, I could go through the capital project policy, right? That we've, really, a capital project should be something, again, remember that you're paying for it in most cases over twenty years. It should be something, in a perfect world, that lasts for at least twenty years, right? Just from a public policy sort of theory standpoint, you're going to pay for something, you don't want the thing to be expired by the time you're still paying debt service on it. Because the taxpayers using the thing should be the ones funding it in, in theory, right? So, but I think when you have, you know, we have some, some big ticket items that have come through the budget, there's just really no way around some of the, some of the dollars being where they are, so. But I think it definitely, it's definitely a driving factor.
Do we have any guidance as to whether we should be trying to avoid some of these new capital expenditures, or just act like we have to do everything that's here, and, and it all gets compounded, and it is what it is? I mean, is there any overall guidance, or?
From, from the staff's standpoint, from our standpoint? I mean, I think it, my personal recommendation, and, and again, I, we've reviewed a lot of these, I edited a few of these down, a few Board of Ed projects that I talked to Board of Ed about, just based on some projects they had previously approved, that I had scaled back a little bit. But I think, given where the mill rate shook out, given the impact on taxpayers that we just went through in the operating budget, I mean, I think it would be prudent to take a very hard look at a lot of these and say, what you want and what your needs, and ultimately, that's the decision that we all have to, have to make. But I think, especially when you go through some of these projects that have been previously approved, too, we have a lot on the books that we still have to work through and get accomplished. But, we also, it's a balance, because we don't want to not invest in the community and have things, you know, start to fail, and, you know, roads, as Dan will probably tell you during his presentation, roads, the road improvement program is consistently the highest vote getter at referendum every year, usually north of seventy to seventy-five, if not eighty percent approval. You know, in that case, and that's always a big ticket item, it's always somewhere between one and a half to two million dollars. Those are residents saying, we're okay paying taxes for that. So those are, I don't think scaling that back is necessary. Because I think that's just the, the sign of something you got to do to maintain your assets and town.
Mr. Mylone, can I, can I just clarify your, are you talking about projects in general, or are you talking about just Board of Ed, or Cheshire?
In general, I mean, in, in general, are we trying to be more critical of some of these expenditures because we know they're going to compound against the, the, the debt of the schools coming at the same time? Or are we, is it business as usual, as if those, those aren't coming up?
I'll give you my two cents, and that is, this is not business as usual. This, this is a year for must haves, it's not a year for nice to haves. So I, I'm going to be looking at the, the first year capital projects with, with a lot more scrutiny than, than I may have previously. And it's because of the pressures, exactly what you said, the pressures that we're, we're facing and will be facing for several years, so.
Well, it's nice to know the sense of staff and the sense of our chair, of course, and as we hear from people, because I'd rather ask them questions now than not ask the questions, and they, they walk away assuming that we're all fine, and then, then we just start to say, well, we can't do this. So, it was just, thank you, I don't know.
Yep. Ms. Kramer, yes, I'm sorry.
Let's over here, through your chair to Sean, and anybody else who's been on the council before, just for something new, and I have a few questions on this awesome spreadsheet here. Are all of these, have all of these already been voted on by a prior council? voted on and approved?
Yes.
So every project on here has passed before the board, we'll have minutes for it, questions, and all voted with a majority of the town council, up, up until five years, obviously, some of the projects.
No, these go back a little further than that, so just to orient, real, I mean, I can, very briefly, if you look at your sheet here, the first number that you see there is the fiscal year that that capital project was approved for. So you'll notice, like, let's take Planning and Development there. Those four proj, and I color coded them only by when there's a change between the year, right? So they're kind of grouped by what year they are. If you see, or we take the first one, fiscal twenty-four, so that's last year, we approved two hundred thousand for parking lot replacement at the police station. That's that third line at the top, right here. Two hundred thousand dollars, if you move to the side, we've spent one hundred and forty-one thousand six fifty, fifty-eight, with the remaining balance of fifty-eight thousand three forty-two. Again, any of these projects will have a multitude of reasons why they're still funded. In that case, there may still be some funding to be spent. In some cases, there'll be projects that are completed and they can be closed out. But you'll see going back, there are projects back in twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty. But in every case here, these were voted on and approved as part of a capital project, capital budget in the fiscal year referenced.
Anywhere on this chart, does it keep track of percentage of completion?
Just percent that's been spent on budget. And again, there's a lot of caveats with, so that's that last column. Percent used. There are caveats with a number of these, especially the older dates, I wouldn't be too alarmed by something too old. They're either, like, if you take land acquisition, there's a reason, it says oh-five there, but you'll see it's nineteen point six million dollars. That was a combination of all of the prior land acquisition approvals before the municipal system was created, right? So it's not like there was a one-year project of nineteen point six two five million dollars, that was all of the years prior. When we add something like land acquisition into the fund, in many cases, before they've been added and tracked back into that same account, kind of restoring funds into the account. And, and again, and some of these projects, one that you'll, you'll see later in Water Pollution Control on the second page, the twenty seventeen project for West Johnson Pump Station, that was approved at three point five million dollars, that project came in much lower than initially anticipated, and the design changes, things happen after you've approved an appropriation. That's not, that's a good example, those aren't funds that are just available, that one million dollars, it's the top of the water pollution control line there, that's not available in part because seven hundred fifty thousand has already been deauthorized, and there's a process for deauthorizing projects. So that, again, it's basically pre-closing out a project.
Deauthorized by?
Deauthorized by the, by the council.
And the last part of my question is, the original appropriation, we can basically see what went to referendum by something that's over a certain amount of money?
I wish it was that simple. Unfortunately, the Town of Cheshire's charter says that any project in and of itself that's over five hundred thousand dollars goes to referendum, but also any same project that in combination with the prior, any project in the prior five years in total is over five hundred thousand dollars, very uniquely Cheshire language in this charter. We call that the look back. So if you have window replacements at the high school, I always use that one because I think there's been seven appropriations for it, even if you do a hundred thousand dollars every year, by that fifth year, a hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, let's say, by the fourth year, you've, that has to go to referendum, even if you're only asking for a hundred thousand dollars. If in total, with the look back, it's over five hundred. And you've seen that in the ballot box before, where you see something that's lower than five hundred, that's why, it's because taken in combination with the same project. And that's been a trend, frankly, it's a trend I'd love to get us away from, but you'll see in the budget books, because it becomes an enormous staff burden of tracking, incredible burden. But also, you'll see a lot of projects that are requested, not just in the first year, but they're requested in the same amount for all five years of the capital plan. And without getting too far into municipal finance, it really doesn't actually save us any money to do that. You could approve, if you knew the full amount you want to spend to, say, replace windows at the high school, you could ask for that all upfront, it's actually Jim's job to finance the project, that's why he's our finance director. You don't actually save anything by breaking them up into little bits. And furthermore, because the charter requires you to send it to referendum anyway, once you've gone over five hundred, you're also not saving projects that go to referendum. So again, that, that gets down into the weeds a little bit.
Changes the number on the rever, referendum, though? You're referencing a hundred grand at the fifth year, sort of five hundred, five years prior, or?
Yep, of both ways, yes, it's actually going to referendum twice.
And my last referendum bit, the tail end of that, is anything that hasn't been voted on in referendum is technically up for negotiations with the type budget? So if the town has voted on something and approved financing for a project, that's something that, as a town, we have to go forward with. But other projects, this is more like the need versus want, we need to do something that went to referendum, we don't need to do something that hasn't.
Or doesn't have to. You're talking about.
Say again?
It's, or doesn't have to go, it's like, are you talking about projects under five hundred thousand?
I'm talking about something that's already been voted on and, and approved, the spending's been approved by a vote.
Of the council?
Of the town.
Okay.
Something that went to referendum.
Referendum question, yes.
So that, that project's been paid for, not paid for, but of.
Right.
In all intents and purposes, paid for by the town, by the taxpayers, that project's a go. Anything under that type of approval, we can, as a town council, depending on where it is in the project, of course, that's something that we can negotiate on, or?
I mean, you're saying, could you deauthorize previously approved projects?
Yeah.
Theoretically, yeah.
But anything that's not been to referendum, obviously, that's untouchable. Because it's voted on and approved.
I don't know that that's untouchable.
I think we can, we can, we can override that.
The only, the only thing I would say to your, to your point, and I know where you're going, is if there was a three hundred thousand dollar project.
School windows, let's just say.
Or, well, let's, let's say it's a, let's say it's a full project, I don't want to do that one.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll tell you why.
Okay.
Because that would, that's one of the ones that we can look at to say, we as a council are deauthorizing that project because it hasn't been done in X number of years.
And there's going to be in the school or whatever.
Let's look at a pump station. There's probably something on here.
Elwood, Elwood's on air. Are you all good?
Yeah.
That's, that's this year, so you mean the past.
You said Wes Johnson is already, is already done, is that correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Most of these are done. So let me give you a hypothetical. Let's say there's, there was a pump station on here, that the planning money has been spent, it's, the whole thing was three hundred thousand. We spent thirty thousand on planning and engineering, and we've spent half of the money on the building of the pump station, or the road, whatever needed to be done to the pump station. But there's still more work to be done. You wouldn't want to halt that project in the middle to say, okay, we're going to take back that funding. But, to your other point, if there's projects that, there hasn't been a dime spent yet.
Okay. Even if it went to a referendum and was voted, and it was approved, on a ballot?
Yeah, I don't think we're going to find any that have gone through referendum that haven't been started yet.
Okay, okay. Thank you for entertaining that, everyone.
Just, I mean, I, I've seen lists where, where Cheshire ranks quite high in terms of debt compared to other towns and cities in the state. I'm not sure how accurate some of these lists are, but it may be because of the schools are in there as well. But I, I kind of like that, you know, we, we are kind of in agreement that we have to be a little conservative on this end of it. And looking at, not to pick on the Board of Ed, but I mean, there was a lot of projects that were approved by, for them in the past several years, that, some of them haven't even been, been started yet. I'm counting about a couple million dollars quickly off the top of my head. So, say for instance, we approve whatever they're asking for this year, and then they, they say, okay, well, we're going to do those this year plus these others. That just, we've already approved the debt, sort of. But, does the, the rates change if we, or have you locked in the rates, like, if we approved it last year?
No, I usually bond only when, when they've spent the money, or they plan on spending it, and I'm sure they're going to spend it within a short period of time.
Okay, so they, so that, it could cost us more money if they wait on things, it could cost us less, I don't know, I mean, but, yeah.
But these haven't been bonded, there's not money.
Not, yeah, not, nothing of that has been bonded. So these are projects, though, that, you know, you start looking at them all and saying, wow. There was a lot of projects that we approved and that had.
There was a lot of projects that we approved and that haven't even been touched yet. And then, you know, they're asking for a bunch more, so. I don't even know how they will have time to, to go through all of these projects. There's a lot of projects here that they, they have on here, plus add on two brand-new schools we're building. It, it just seems like a lot to me, but I guess when we get to Dr. Solen, and then we can, we can ask them about that.
Just, it seems like there's a lot of attention to these past projects that have been approved in the past and either partially are not funded at all, or not used, the funding's not used at all. It's almost impossible for us to look at this without history on each one and understand.
Yeah, it is.
Are we going to set aside a time to go through these? If this is something we're serious consi- what's that?
Is that what we're doing?
I think they're going towards some future stuff.
New stuff, this is old stuff, this is old. Oh, I see what you're saying.
So I don't, are we going to set, if this is, if we're serious about this, are we going to set time to understand all these and see if there are opportunities here? I, no, I, I'm open to discussing it, I don't know if, it seems like there's an interest in doing that, so. But I don't know how we do it without having a, a session to go through each one and talk them through.
Yeah, I don't know that that, I, I think that would be a pretty daunting effort. I, I hear you, I mean, I think there's some, I think certainly similar projects if, and when we compare. I'm happy to go through and highlight some of them where there's been previous approvals that are in the same, same project type or the same amount, or, sorry, the same project scope. And if we're asking if either we, or the Board of Ed, or any project in this is in the same vein, those are important to ask, what's the plan, why is this in addition to the additional funds? And are you really going to be able to spend it this year? These are all, I think, everything in the proposed operating budget, I mean, and as you'll hear, there are valid reasons behind all of these requests, there's no extraneous, you know, request. But it's a question of how can we prioritize? And I think this document helps prioritize a little bit of what we've already committed to in the past. Many of these projects, and remember, just because they haven't, the actual dollars haven't left the town doesn't mean, in many cases, staff work's already gone and done, has been done in the planning of the project or initial, whatever the example may be. Particularly 2024 projects, we just got those approved. In many cases, some of those funds weren't even available until this past December, right? If the project went to referendum, we didn't get approval to spend that money until November of last year. So the '24 and '23 projects, you should expect to see balances on there. Even in many cases, balances haven't been spent yet. You know, as you go back to '21, '22, and '20, and you'll see there's a lot less of those. But when there are there, I think we have to decide, and in many cases, I think, but I, I agree that either during our kind of wrap-up meetings or our sort of discussion meetings at the end of presentations, it'd be good to talk about some of those, especially some of the ones that, some of these predate my arrival. There's a number of projects in here that have reasons that they're out there. Sometimes we're waiting on grants to come through from the state, so they have to just stay in the system. Project's done, but it's also not money that's under, there's no, there's no lack of effort on the town staff. We're just waiting for a grant to come through, so the project account has to stay open. So to your point, John, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stories behind each of these that, that are all.
We wouldn't know, but.
Right.
And I, you know, you get something like the Mount Sanford Road culvert replacement, which I think we talked about recently, has, was, it's, it looks like it's from '17. Like, it's $875,000, none of which has been spent yet, not a pay.
Right, yeah.
So are we waiting, you know, are we waiting for a grant there, or is that a project that's?
Yeah, that, that project, I think.
And if we identified it in '17 and we haven't done it yet, maybe it doesn't need to get done.
I know there were a lot of objections from the property owner, right, immediately adjacent to that on South Brooksville?
It's a determinate bridge, I mean, you know, engineering or public works would know if it's, it's an issue. But if it's not, and it was, maybe that's $875,000 that we.
Right.
But we're not going to know unless we discuss it. I, I'm just asking a question, I don't know how we'll get to any value out of this.
I think, I think, as, as Sean said, my, my preference would be to do it during deliberations as we're, you know, as we have a sense of where we are with the current spending, and then we go back and look at previous spending.
So Public Works here tonight, we might look at these and ask questions about these tonight.
I, no. Yeah, I, I would prefer not to, but I mean, you know.
Can we ask the department heads and the Board of Ed to maybe go through the projects that were less than 50% of it, the money has been spent over the past 10 years, some of them? Just give us an explanation about where, where it stands with that, and if it's something that we, we need to keep on the books still. Maybe if, if they, that way we get the list, and we could just go through it ourselves versus sitting here asking a million questions about it.
Yeah, and, and it could be as easy as anything that's over three years that hasn't had an expenditure yet.
Yeah, that, that makes sense, because, I mean, there's a lot that's, say, 0% or, you know, or 20% or whatever it is, but, you know, anything under 50% even. And like I said, a lot of these are '24, '23 projects in the bulk. I know it looks like a lot because there's three pages, but I think, could certainly call the list down to some reasonable amount, and maybe at deliberations, we could go through and say, because I think exactly that. I think after three years, it's perfectly reasonable to ask, all right, what's the status? Are we waiting on a state grant? Are we waiting on design documents? Has there been staff turnover and the document hasn't, and the project hasn't gotten off the ground? There's a variety of reasons for all of these. But it's also important before we add, and again, I think part of the reason this question kept coming up from, and I think it's very valid, is, you know, we have 57 new projects proposed for just the first year, as we said at the outset, so we have to decide how many of those projects are we going to fund in fiscal '25, because those are not on this list yet. They're about to be added, whatever we add will go on to this list, right?
No, I mean, it was just a comment, just a thank you for providing this context, because it does provide a big picture for us, and it just demonstrates to us, you know, what has been approved already previously, has been vetted thoroughly and approved recently by prior councils, and so. But it does provide us with that big picture, that's all, thank you.
True. And mine is just a perspective point as well. I know in my house, when, when budgetary needs change, such as in Cheshire with the new schools, five years ago, looking, or four years ago, looking at a project, it might have seemed more feasible when the debt burden was lower. And now we have the school debt burden that's really in our faces. It might put some of these projects in a different perspective as per immediate spending. And that's just the direction that I'm heading.
That could be why some of the Board of Ed projects were held back a little bit, because they weren't sure what direction the new schools were going to go, you know, in the last few years. So now that that's solidified, there may be some potential to take some of these off the table, maybe.
Yeah. But if I, but if I'm reading this correctly, there's like $270 million of available budget that we've, that we're, that we have debt in place for?
150 of that in two schools.
Oh, okay, so two schools are in here.
Yeah, page three, you'll see it, there's 148 million.
Okay, that makes me feel better, I was saying, oh my god. Two schools are in here, okay, all right. All right, I didn't notice that, that's great. You can breathe.
You know, and again, Sean mentioned too, the land, some of that land stuff was, you know, land that we spent 20, 30 years ago on various open space, Chapman Property, or Dometicus Property, or Highland Property. You know, that, some of that'll phase out a lot in this, hopefully, before it's too long.
Ready to get started?
WPCD?
Sure. We've got Dave Milano here, our superintendent, and Merrick coming out of town engineer, we've got two chairs.
As with some of you, this is our first budget as well, so please be gentle.
No chance of that.
So we'll flip to page 227. We'll orient you to a five-year plan, let's, almost think of it as a table of contents, although without page numbers. But it shows you the projects that you'll see, and then for each of these rows, you will see corresponding projects in order over the next, in this case, what is that? 10 to 12 projects, the next 10 to 12 pages will be those. The first year being the first column, fiscal '24, '25, and you'll see there's, and sorry, just, I should orient. The DR is Department Request line, TM is Town Manager Recommended, that means I've approved it to advance. And then Town Council will say zero for all of these, because ultimately you'll decide what goes in that square, if anything, right? The zeros on each of those three rows, so that's the way the summary sheet works. And with that, we'll start with the Elmwood Pump Station upgrade. Just a very brief summary of what's going on.
So during the operating budget, I had prepared the capital budget presentation at the same time, just in case we're going to have time for it. So I just printed out a handful of these slides that I had, which actually represent only the year-one projects that we're dealing with, so it might be just a more, better representation. The Elmwood Pump Station, as you know, we had the request to replace the three pumps that were there, which I'm glad to say that this week we completed that, and all three new pumps are installed and operational. So, you know, well done on all parties involved. For the Elmwood Pump Station, originally, this was last year's budget, we had requested for a total rebuild of a, upgrade for that, $3.5 million, that was going to be in year three at the time. But with the new pumps being installed, we were actually to be able to, with an estimate, drop it down to $2 million, which is also put in year three. But as part of that, we still need engineering, investigation, analysis, you know, design to make all that, you know, happen. So that's why we are budgeting for $200,000 on design efforts.
All right, so that one, again, this will be example, that one's, that $200,000 you see in the first year, as you see on the project page, it's just sort of design of the project, that's very simple, thank you. So get back to where we're saying.
Not the exterior of the building, it's more, whatever's inside it.
But the exterior as well, that the roof would have to be replaced. One of the big items that we need is, we need a bypass put in for that pump station. So if anything goes down, there's no way to repair it without having major issues, rentals of, of bypass pumping, which is a very expensive thing to have. So we are anticipating having a constructed bypass for any emergency or anything that would happen down the road. That's one of the primary.
Would you say the most important pump station?
Yeah.
The lynch pad for a house.
That's like the center.
Other stations pumped to it.
And that's why there was a push to have those three pumps replaced before they went out, because if they went out, there's a problem.
So, not to be nitpicky, but so the, the $200,000 this year is for design, obviously, and then the plan would be to perhaps do the project in two years from now? Why not do the design, why not spend the design money next year, '25, '26, and then do the project the following year? What's, what's the gap for? What's the, the gap?
The amount of time to get the design done.
Is that, is that how long it takes?
Yeah, and we were moving it forward from last year's approval. So last year was, was projected for year two, so we moved it to year one.
Right.
That, that's the reason why it's in the year one right now.
Does it take the two years, though, to get that done before you start the project?
Well, it's, it's going to take over a year probably for the design analysis, and then they're going to come up with a cost estimate for us, and that way we'll know what to plug in for the actual construction costs. So we're just estimating at, at $2 million right now. Hopefully it'd be less, but it could be more. And with the new pumps installed, we're thinking that everything's going to drop down. We did a lot of improvements with this, with this pumping.
Will you have to RFP on that, or do you have, you know, as consultants, or?
In-house, yeah, Ray Pierce is our in-house consultant.
So they, this goes to Ray, Ray Pierce?
Yes.
Any other questions on that?
This question, you originally had contemplated a $3.5 million down into, what's the difference in price? How does it come down from $3.5 to $2?
That is something that the consultant estimated as a lowering because of our pumps that were installed.
I would say, I like the $2 million more than the $3.5.
No, definitely, it definitely dropped this.
All right, next one is Moss Farms.
Moss Farms Pump Upgrade, we have that projected in year two. That project has already been designed, and it's ready to go. It was shelved only because of funding, so it's already been pushed off one year. So we also push it off, that's a station that doesn't necessarily need to be done, it's just more of a want at this point, but it does have to be done at, at some point.
Comment on that one?
I apologize, I said the next one was Moss Farms, that's actually year two, and Merrick just said.
Yeah.
It's probably better to just, given the number of projects, we can stick to year one projects. And then, anyone has any questions, sorry to interrupt there. This is a curveball to see if Merrick was paying attention. He passed. All right, next project.
Denitrification.
Yep.
I'm going to have Dave take this one.
Yeah, this is for the design to upgrade our denitrification. Call it a building, but it's really a process, because that's the way we remove nitrogen, which is a permanent number by DDP. It's at, it actually says it was constructed in 2015 on the sheet, but it's actually '05. So it is almost, it's about 20 years old, which is coming to the end of its useful life. That would require a design, we'll need all new pumps, valves, we have pneumatic valves in there. The media that was put in 20 years ago also has a shelf life. We have about five D-Nite cells, we have methanol pumps, we have the methanol holding tanks, we have extensive underground piping that pumps the methanol to the building. We have a lot of issues with our D-Nite building, given the age. The pumps go air-bound a lot, because all the, any, any type of air you get in the pipe, the pumps go air-bound, you stop, pump the methanol, which without the methanol, we don't move nitrogen, and then you're starting to get into violating your permit, and then DDP, you don't want DDP involved, so.
That happens a lot, you're saying?
Yeah. It's, like I said, it's 20 years old, most of the equipment's outside, too. So all the methanol pumps, it's the big tanks you see right near the fields. It's all outside, exposed to the elements, so everything's kind of deteriorating from the abuse.
Would you be covering the, in the future, or is that?
I think it's, you can't, because the methanol is exposed.
So you have to, you can't even do that, okay.
Yeah, can't. We have a roof over it, but we can't enclose it.
Oh, so there is currently a roof over it?
Yep, yep.
So what is that $1.5 million for?
The design, to upgrade the denitrification.
And the, and the $1.5?
Is for construction.
Now, last year, that, the design was in year two, and construction was in year three, so we moved it up forward. But last year's construction costs, we had it projected at a million. The new estimates came up, up at $1.5, so it's increasing, it's obviously increased in price, so.
So I'm, I'm not as familiar with this as other things, so that's, that's a high design number for construction cost. Why is that so high based on the construction cost?
I'm in the same boat you are, it is, out of my expertise, that's why Ray Pierce kind of gave us that estimate for that.
Do you understand why?
Well, it's a lot of, I would say, mainly because of all the methanol piping and how far it goes, and it goes underground, so that might be coming, they might have to dig some of that up and replace all of it, so that would be my guess, but.
But that's not part of the design, that's part of the construction, right?
Yeah, the $1.5 you're talking about.
Well, the $500 is design.
So the third, a third of the project is, is the design?
25%, but that's, that's a hard, you know, usually it's much less. And I'm sure there's good reasons for it, I, I know they're professional, I just. Do we have any checks and balances against our consultants on their fees? I mean, if you, if you, if you're not expert, how do we, how do we know that the fee is consistent with industry standards and is fair?
Normally, I, I have a pretty good gut check on most of this, but this is something that's kind of out of, out of my realm. So what I can do is I can touch base with Ray Pierce and try to get a better understanding of this, this fee, and then take it from there, so if it's something that doesn't make sense, then maybe we can rebid it out.
Yeah, only because it's 25% of the whole, of the whole project cost, so.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
Just to check, I mean, I'm not suggesting that they're, it probably is right, but it's good to keep, keep, to ask the questions. So, okay.
Are these, are these projects put out for bid, or do you have the same people that do these projects through all the time?
Well, the project would go out to bid.
But not the design, the people who do that, the first bid is that?
Something like this probably would go out for bid as well, for, for design purposes.
So that 500 is purely a?
Yeah.
Oh, so you're going to, you're going to do an RFP for, for this?
For something like this, would, I would envision an RFP to get the best price we can.
And that's for both pieces of the project, the 500 and the 1.5?
Yeah, separately.
Okay.
Well, we won't know the actual construction cost without a design, so we get the estimate from them, so we know it's a budget for the construction.
Is that company-specific for mechanics, for this type of industrial design? They, that's their field?
Well, the estimate from, from Ray Pierce, yeah, this is, this is in there well else.
This is their field, okay.
So if this one being $500,000, that's a referendum. Right, so is, is it going out to bid going to happen well before we have to go? I mean, what if they come back at 495?
I wonder if it gets voted down.
Yeah, I mean, always a risk, the, the, you know, the sewer plant upgrade was voted down the first time it went through.
I mean, I'm just asking, are we going to be able to solidify the actual design number before we go refer?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we, before our next budget workshop, we can get an explanation from Ray Pierce as to why they had that as their estimate, but that's not, that's not their work. We're just asking them to provide a cost estimate if we go out. We go out, like anything else, we'll have a project, we, we want it to be high enough that we know bids, we're confident bids will come in lower than that. But it doesn't mean it has to stay at five hundred, it might end up being lower.
Okay, I just am thinking in terms of later on when we have a discussion about how many referendum items we have, you know, if, if that's a good number, yeah.
Right. Definitely can be changed.
Who's next?
Next one? Alright, next one's the in-kind treatment plant and pump station equipment replacement. If you see that, uh, we are requesting, uh, three hundred thousand, that's on a yearly basis. Now, that line item, um, from previous years is a combination of two line items that have been historically, um, used in the past. So, back in the past, you had an upgrade for various plant components at two hundred thousand, and then you had in-kind treatment plant component replacement at a hundred thousand. So combining that is three hundred thousand, so instead of having two line items, I combine it to one. This is a, a need, um, are, these are replacement parts, everything breaks, it's just, um, I don't have to add anymore.
Yeah, this is the money I use for, uh, we just had a bid waiver for a new influent pump. That's what I use this money for when big ticket items that just need replacing. Between the UV treatment system, the influent pump stations, any of the pump stations, the pumps themselves are pretty big ticket items, so if they go, it's good to have a safety net to be able to keep the plant going. Doesn't mean I'll necessarily use all of it, but it's good to have in case something does need to be replaced.
What's currently in the account, do you know, Jim?
It's right on the, on the sheet I passed out, the one from last year, there's sixteen thousand left.
One sixty?
We approved a hundred thousand dollars last year, and we spent.
And there's nothing from any of the previous years, then?
No, I think we only added that one maybe last year or two.
Okay.
Right, so last year's approval, we had the one hundred thousand there, but we got a zero for the upgrade plant components, so we were only working off of a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's all that's spent.
Yeah, we, we can choose.
But you don't have specific items identified for this, so for some reason, and I'm not suggesting, for some reason we said, you know, can you live with two hundred thousand?
I'm looking at trying to upgrade our UV system that's been online for ten years. A lot of the modules and the UV bulbs and ballasts are all pretty much, need to be replaced, and that's how we disinfect for E. coli and coliform, which is also on our permit. So those are big ticket items that I have to buy to keep this in, you know, good standing. So I do have things in mind that I will use that money for.
So you think you need the three hundred thousand, is what you're saying?
Yes.
But should, but you think you're gonna need that every year for the next five years, is that? Because we, you have that, put that three hundred thousand put for the next five years, so it sounds like you need three hundred thousand every year for parts, you feel that?
Yeah, it can, I think as Dave said, it could adjust if he had a year where you need to use, I think there's a lot of upgrades that the plant needs. There's also, as we'll get to, as you'll see, there's a large future upgrade in our, in our future that, it's possible, depending on what, you know, those plans are, you may not need all of these. Also, if we've had a year where he hasn't needed to spend it, we just wouldn't ask for it the next year. But when there's emergencies or things that bug, we can't wait for the next round of capital budgets to, to spend on some of those things.
So year to date this year, you've used eighty-four thousand or four hundred?
Yeah.
Yep.
That's correct.
Sean, and that, because it's a line item, would, would that, would that then be a referendum item that we'd have to go, because they're, it's, it's a consistent amount?
Probably.
Right, okay.
But not yet, because we went from a hundred and three hundred, so we didn't, we.
Well, I mean, you're. Yeah, I will say, without getting too, uh, into the weeds, but this is an area where this, so we have bond counsel, our, our bond attorneys who provide the actual ruling on all of those. And we have had, um, success, like sidewalk, like new sidewalk extensions, things like that, that are distinct projects, even if in combination they're over five hundred thousand. The bond attorneys have said, well, those are really separate distinct segments of sidewalk.
Right.
And so it really doesn't necessitate a refer, again, ultimately, that's the, that's why we pay the bond attorneys to weigh in on those. Because ultimately, their, their job is to certify the town as spending the money on what they said they'd spend the money on. So the investors in our bonds know what we're spending their money, that they're lending us on, right, that's the concept. So, um, there are certain times that we've had, um, again, the road, road repaving is an example, of course, road repaving is always at a number that's going to referendum anyway. But similarly, you could make the argument, let's say our requirement to go to bond, uh, to referendum was two million dollars. You could make the argument that we're doing Willow Street and Spring Street this year, but we're doing, you know, South Brooksville next year. Those are distinct efforts, they don't need to go to referendum.
Just because we call them the same thing.
If they were under our limit, again, that's a bad example because they are over five hundred thousand, but that concept is applied to, uh, some, I don't know on these in-kind, I'd have to rely on the bond attorney. If they said, well, you're buying separate distinct things with those funds, it may not have to go to referendum, but we always ask that question when we get closer to deciding what's going to referendum.
Just a quick question, novice question here, this sounds like a maintenance budget that would just be a recurring thing every year, and you said it just, you just started it last year?
Correct.
How did you budget for repairs prior to that?
So, not a bad question, uh, and I think back to what I was saying earlier, a lot, there are projects that are now in our capital budget that, uh, you can easily make the case for them being in the operating budget. This is, this is a good example of something that, if you saw fit to increase their operating budget by three hundred thousand dollars, you should, would need to ask for it every year here. So whatever, or whatever that number is.
So this maintenance is not currently in the operating budget?
Correct, over the years, and that's, that's a, right, especially when we get to the school projects, you're, you'll see a lot of those sort of maintenance type of projects that are less distinct efforts, like singular boilers.
Yeah, this doesn't, that's what this, this seems to be a general fund, rather than asking for a particular project.
It is, yeah, and so over the last few, I think in part to keep operating budgets as lean as possible, that's been, I think, a trend in town for some time now.
But it's kind of, it's not black or white, this is, that's great, because this, it's still part of a.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's legitimate to do it in either place, it's just how do you want to fund it, um, ultimately. In this case, it's further complicated by the fact that Ray Pierce paid for the WPCB operating budget, so it's not general fund tax dollars. But the same logic applies when we get into other, uh, we had this discussion when we talked about moving tree removal, tree trimming back into the operating budget. It's a similar example, you'll see historically, and we still have a capital account for prior approved tree trimming, but when you're tree trimming every single year.
For the fixed cost on loan.
And that's why I tried to put it, I think we proved fifty thousand, I should maybe thirty thousand. Love to get that number back up to the seventy, eighty thousand of tree trimming that we really should be doing proactively in the operating budget. But as Bill just experienced, it's not easy to add a hundred thousand to the.
Yeah, especially with, with these things that are generic, there, there's nothing specific that it's going towards, and it's going to be every year, and it, it's, it's best, I think.
Yep.
We're agreed that it's best in the operating and it's a better way to capture it, yeah? Because it's the cost of doing business is opposed to, as opposed to the, you know, the, um, upgrade of a pump station, which is a, you know, which is a once every twenty-year thing.
I couldn't agree more, I mean, again, it really, this, that kind of a conversation was the reason that I first proposed moving, presenting a capital budget at the same time as the operating budget. Because for many years here, we, we did the operating budget in April, finished it by the end of April, we didn't start the capital budget until July or August. The worst case scenario is if we agree right now that it should really be in the operating budget, and we cut it from the capital budget, and then next operating budget, we don't fund it, then it's not in either spot.
Yeah.
So the whole point of presenting these and having these conversations, similar.
Well, that makes it easier then, we just were moving.
Well, right.
That's easy for us.
I guess it depends on your perspective, not great if you're planning to replace, yeah, so, that same.
Finish it through the look, Tim, it's good.
So, to that point.
That's not his regular look?
Right.
To that point, does it make sense to, rather than call this in-kind treatment plant and pump station upgrade, what you talked about, and I lost the technical term, I apologize, the, um.
UV?
Yes, so if we called it a UV upgrade or replacement, and gave you the, gave you the three for that, as opposed to ongoing maintenance stuff? Does that, does that still get you where you're going? And then, next year, we incorporate the ongoing maintenance stuff into a, into a operating budget?
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, yes.
So making a project, a new project?
I assume these maintenance items are not twenty-year life items, right? These things will fail before that?
I would say ten, ten to fifteen years, the UV bulbs probably last, I mean, they're supposed to be replaced after a certain amount of hours, and we're way past that, as we stand now.
Still in code?
Yeah, oh yeah, we're still disintegrating.
The problem is, we don't know what's gonna fail.
Yeah.
So if we isolate it to one specific item, and something else fails, then we don't have the money to, to repair it, so.
Yeah.
A suggestion could be to keep it at three hundred for this year, and then get into the operating next year.
Yeah, we'll keep it, we'll keep it this way for this year and just move it to operating going forward.
Okay, um, next, there. Another need is, is a SCADA notification system, Dave?
Yeah, as it stands right now, our SCADA system is, uh, running on Windows seven, the servers are very, very out of date.
Very current, yeah.
Yeah, very current technology, um, basically, so you know, SCADA stands for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. So it, it stores all of the plant data, which we have to get to the DDP, uh, on a monthly basis, and it also gives us alarms for when we're not there. So if this system fails, we don't know what's going on at the plant after hours, and we're on borrowed time, as you know, with the Windows seven technology, it's, the servers are on their way out.
I will say that we are spot on with this number, we just received our final quote, uh, what's it, two hundred and forty?
Yeah.
Something thousand, so we were, we estimated properly on this one.
And that includes the software upgrade and all that?
Yep, new servers, new, it's, new software, yeah.
SCADA is a, um, sort of widely used system, is that right?
Yeah, every plant has it, yeah.
Is this something that can be split up over the course of multiple budgets, or does this have to be done all at once?
All at once, yeah.
This is the brain to the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How long, this is the first time you're putting in the budget, or this first time you're considering replacing it?
This has been in the budget, um, this was in, last year's budget was approved of for year two, so we've moved forward properly.
What's the life expectancy of this system?
I believe an app engineer said the technology is usually replaced every five years, we're way past that, so we've gotten our useful life out of it, and then some.
Where are we at now, Windows eleven?
Yeah, we're up there, yeah.
And next month we'll be at Windows twelve?
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, next on our list is, uh, what do we have here, INI, Investigation and Remediation, um, we all know what INI is now. So last year, we requested funds and we did not receive anything, um, and with the urgency of INI, we have to get it somehow into the budget, so. The point is, we need to do something.
This is a recurring, this is another one of the recurring things.
Yeah, we have major issues with inflow and infiltration into our system, which, which strain on our system, and, you know, causes a lot of failures to parts and everything, so you have to, there is a need to fix this. And this is gonna be a requirement from Connecticut DEEP. So right now, we are in the process of working with DEEP, um, doing RFQ process to do, uh, an analysis of the town, uh, for inflow and infiltration.
So basically, it's like a camera, whatever goes into the pipes, and you just inspect all the pipes throughout?
No, it's more of a medium system, so they're gonna be taking, uh, checking out the manholes during, during storm events and, and, you know, checking out the flows, monitoring that. That's just for the analysis, and then they can determine whether the pipes need to be replaced, lined, uh, or whatever method we, suitable.
So this is actually for doing work, this is not for study, this is for actually INI improvements?
This is more for INI improvements, yeah.
But, so you have identified.
As, as well as studies, because we have to determine where they are. Yeah, I think I do have. Yeah, so in, in the write-up, I do have it written as design and implementation.
Do you have any pass numbers on cost?
No, it, it's so, it's so difficult to put a cost on it, because you don't know what the issues are.
So the four hundred should cover any?
The four hundred's not even close. You're talking over two million dollars.
And, and this is a, this is a project ask instead of in the operational budget, because?
Well, it is more of a distinct effort, in that, once you've corrected your INI theoretically, you should have less, I mean, the, the issue is we have infiltration, when we have heavy rains, or we have, uh, pipes running through low areas, rivers, waters flowing in. Uh, when we had the Fort Main break on South Main, through the heavy rain, it was ninety-eight percent, ninety-nine percent water in the pipe, um, because there's so much infiltration. So, in a perfect world, this system would be nearly airtight, watertight, and you'd only be pumping sewage, and it's to be treated, your number, therefore your capacity at your plant would be more in line with where it should be. So, we just have a lot of, and it could be any, there's things they have to do, their cameras are one way to identify some, there's dye tests that they do to see how water is getting into the pipes. But again, I think it is, this one is more of an appropriate capital project, because once you've completed the overall effort, which is a multi-year, multi-tens of thousands, a hundred thousands of dollars in the project.
Millions.
Millions probably. You know, in a perfect world, we'll identify one major source of inflow, some manhole that hasn't been on it, it's submerged in a, in a brook or a river, and it's just flowing into our system. That would almost be the best case scenario, fix it, it would be good. More likely is we're gonna have, you know, two hundred spots where rainwater, clean water is getting into the system. Every town is facing every system.
After the five years of four hundred thousand, then we should be good for another ten years, fifteen years, or we, is this an ongoing thing every, after these five years, it's gonna, we're just gonna continue doing it all the time?
The first phase is investigating it, so we don't know what we don't know, I think we don't know, we don't know the extent of the problem until.
This is not gonna be an ongoing thing, once you can isolate and repair the problem.
Okay.
Then you fix the problem.
Because the pipes last a certain amount of years, I mean.
Right, so you have.
The system's not designed for inflow, you don't want inflow and infiltration.
Right, you have an older, you know, the older pipes is eventrified clay, which, which cracks and brittle, and, you know, that's what causes most of it.
Yeah, and if we don't do a DDP, we'll enforce it, so it's better to try to get ahead of it before they do that.
And that's one of the reasons why we're going forward with the INI study, because it's kind of almost, was pushed upon us to do, so.
And part of the reason we didn't fund it last year is we had prior, some prior approvals from, uh, two different appropriations of about a little under two hundred thousand dollars, which we've encumbered and spent on some of the initial investigations this year. So now, we'd be back this year with, um, you know, at least three or more hundred thousand dollars to keep it.
So you know how much of this will be for the INI study versus how much will be left over for doing any fiscal work, do you have any idea?
I don't, I don't believe this was thought of for the INI study, I thought, right now, Ray Pierce is coming up with an estimate to determine, um, the fees associated with doing this INI study. And from there, we have to negotiate with Connecticut DEEP to, to, um, you know, to determine what the grant is gonna be in the funding process, and then we would have to come, you know, before you for funding. But we could utilize that for that purpose as well.
So you intend to get the funding for the study?
The, we are gonna get funding, uh, state funding is fifty-five percent, they're gonna be providing.
Is that post-spend or free spend, town spend?
I believe we have to spend it first.
That's just for the study, you're saying?
That's just for the study, yeah.
So in addition to that, does this get more reviewed with the, um, water pollution control, um, division or?
Authority.
Yes, it'll all be presented to them as well.
It'll all be presented to them, so.
And then we get, we keep them updated on a monthly basis of what, what are the status of the projects.
Because for us, it's, it's just a number here, and it's like, I don't care, I don't have any idea, I have no idea how it's gonna get used. I mean, I know it's important, I agree, couldn't agree more, it's important, but.
That study would be done by an outside vendor, or it's being done by town staff, with the INI study?
That, it's, it's being done by Ray Pierce, they were selected, we, uh, went through an RFQ process with them, you know, outside firms, and they were selected.
For this study or just for the?
For this study, for the INI study and plant, um, capacity evaluation as well. So we're actually doing a capacity evaluation at the plant to determine what our actual flows are, because, you know, I don't think we're really.
When rainwater mixes with, um, sewer output, does that increase our spend on water alpha? Is there, is there?
On treating it?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're wasting kind of that a lot.
Yeah, you've gotta treat everything.
You're treating rainwater.
Treating rain, rainwater, yeah.
So, that adds to the tonnage of water, or the gallons of water that are going through our system that we're paying for to be treated.
And that, not only that, you're also straining the system, you're straining the pumps, pumping and all that, so.
Absolutely. So inherently in here, there is a possible capture of some of those funds just from tightening up the system?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Derek, you mentioned that they're doing a study to determine the flows, but you guys have been sharing flow information for a while as far as how much, at least I've seen at the meetings, that the flows are going up, you know, eleven million, whatever, after big storms. So we know what the flows are, more or less, right? Or?
We know that the flows are excessive, but not what the capacity of the plant is. So those high flows is because of the INI.
Okay.
So we're trying to determine what the actual capacity of the plant in, in the perfect world without the INI and the years.
They won't know the big, the big picture flows at the plant, they won't know them in different segments of the line, that's what they've got. Interesting, you know, you know, and you, you know, I know you noticed that, that New Haven, New Haven, um, um, Sewer District or whatever they're called, New Haven Water Authority, uh, Water Authority makes applicants do flow testing as part of approvals, so if we go in for an application for a development, they'll, they'll identify ten thousand dollars worth of testing that they expect applicants to do, and, and they identify where to say, okay, we, we, we'll give you approval, you test here and here. And they've accumulated over twenty years, everybody else's flow data that they haven't had to pay for, just, just something.
Yeah, that, that has actually been discussed with the authority and will probably be implemented in the sewer regulation, I think.
It's just a way, it's, it's just a way to, you know, if you keep data coming into your system, you don't have to constantly pay for it.
Yep.
Well, I want, I appreciate Trish's question because that's where I was gonna go. I mean, ultimately, we're gonna be spending estimated, you know, two million dollars on this over time. The question is how much, what, what could be the possible rate of return? If we could get that number down, what would be the potential rate? You know, what do you think is being spent to treat that rainwater, uh, that is, that's coming into the system? And if we could get that out, you know, obviously, what, what could be the possible rate of return? I don't know, if you guys, I mean, I know it's probably something that someone would have to calculate. But I'm just curious if, if, you know, is there, is there a possibility that we could get, have a significant savings there on that number?
At this point, I don't think we can answer that question. I think we can get a better understanding once we get the INI study done. Because at that point, we'll know what lines, what needs to be done, what kind of work, whether replacement, relining, um, you know, whatever repair needs to be done. I think we'll get a better understanding once that study is completed, which will happen, um, I believe it was supposed to be this year or in the spring.
But, you know, the other thing is, you know, obviously, we, INI has been a big issue for, forever. I mean, I've been, when I was on the, when I first started and I was on the WPCA back in the late nineties, we were talking about all the water that's coming in through INI, and we've gotta research this, and we've gotta find where the issue is. And we're now twenty-something years later and we're still talking about the fact that we've gotta talk about INI and we gotta figure out where these things are. So what, how come no one can figure out where these things are? I mean, if we've been, if we've been testing this for decades, nobody's been able to find out where these, where this infiltration is, even though we keep putting money into it and we keep having projects for it and keep, WPCA keeps researching this and everyone, like, but we never seem to be able to find an answer to that. So, uh, I'm hoping that maybe we can finally get an answer to that with this, with this, with this study. But I must say, uh, it, it's one of those things like, if we keep looking hard enough, we will find it, maybe next year. So I, I, I guess I am concerned about spending this kind of money on this project without there hopefully being an actual end game to this that, that twenty-seven years has not found yet.
I will say, this isn't, this is going to be an ongoing effort, this, this, um, request here, because this year, we actually, um, did a study on, on a certain line. Um, we've actually implemented, we hired a contractor and they already started, um, I believe last week.
Yeah.
Um, to actually do some rework and relining and repair somebody INI. And one of the major lines, so hopefully it's gonna, you know, make an impact.
Right, we also have to figure out too, how much of this is coming from sump pumps and other things that people are booking into.
And that's, that's what I was gonna say, David, a lot of, a lot of the past stuff that you're talking about has gone and identified specific neighborhoods. So you identify the neighborhood where it is. And then you identify the houses that their sump pumps are draining directly into.
The line.
Yeah, yeah.
That's part of the study as well.
The catch spaces and, so yes, it, I, I just don't wanna characterize it as, you know, we've been looking for twenty-seven years and haven't found anything. Because they, they have found stuff, um, but we're at a point now where, you know, our levels are so high that it becomes imperative that we, you know, that we find some of these spots.
Exactly.
It's, it's time to repair them, is more than anything, right.
Water's one of those things too, that it will, it will find a way into the system, it just gravity, right? I mean, water will find a way, and pipes break and it's like a recurring cost to constantly mitigate.
Um, yes, yes and no, but if you find a, a pipe that is, is already broken and, and, you know, water is seeping into it, you replace that pipe, there's no way that water's gonna get back into that pipe. Unless it travels somewhere else and finds another spot, but.
It will. Therefore, the water.
If it's not inappropriate, I wouldn't mind, this is so important to the, to the town, I wouldn't mind when you, after assuming this gets funded and you get a handle on this and Ray Pierce has a plan, both in terms of the study and in terms of, you know, immediate fixes and things like that, that the WPCA comes to the council and presents the, the long-term vision for what they're gonna be doing with this money, not just the four hundred thousand, but over the next two to three years, so we have, we know as you come back, how it's being used, how, what, what the planning is, what planning is going on, what the expectations are likely to be, and I know you say you, you won't be able to define them exactly, but there should be a master plan of, of the approach or, you know, we're just shooting in the dark, so. I would like to hear it on the council, at the council level, if that's not an appropriate task, the WPCA to make a presentation to the council on that.
Absolutely, definitely.
Noted.
But when you have a hand line, not, you know, what, what you have, you know, you have a.
All right, so next item looks like is the HVAC system, right?
Uh, yes, Dave?
Yeah, so currently, right now, our HVAC system, uh, in the Ops Building, which is where all of our electrical equipment is, our SCADA is failing drastically. We, uh, take apart the heat exchanger almost every two weeks ourselves, which, we're not HVAC techs, but we do it to keep it going. Uh, the system we have in now uses plant effluent to cool the building, which is not ideal. Uh, I, I, yeah, it.
Anyone ever heard of that before?
I have no idea, I have no idea what you're just saying.
So the treated wastewater.
Effluent is that.
I don't think you want to.
Effluent is, is sewage or treat, pre, pre-treated or?
After treatment.
Pulsed.
Yep, is recycled back into our HVAC system, which goes through a heat exchanger and cools it, cools the building. It, it does not work. Uh, we, we had HVAC companies come in and say if they had a hundred options of what to put in here, this would be the last. It's just not, it, it's not sustainable. Like I said, we do what we can, we take apart the heat exchanger and, and flush it out the best we could to keep the, uh, the water flowing through, but.
Now, this is for the operations building, operation building holds a SCADA system which needs to be climate controlled.
Yeah.
So we have AC units, heaters.
Fans, and.
Whatever, just to make it work.
Yeah.
So, just for my own clarification, when you, when you say when this was designed, it's like the last thing that should have been put in, was this part of the?
Two thousand and fifteen upgrade, I believe.
Thirty million dollar upgrade.
Yeah.
Was that a popular thing at the time?
Uh, the company that works on it is, it's only like a go-green effort that just, you know, didn't work in the long term.
Thirty million dollars.
Pretty much, it's always brown when we take it apart, so. Yeah.
Yeah.
It's rough, but we, you know, we're doing what we can, we got, like I said, window units, keeping everything cool.
It was probably intended to be an innovative, you know, sustainable effort or whatever, but just wasn't, wasn't successful.
Could you freeze this slide?
It doesn't add.
Um, the next on our list is, um, heavy-duty vehicles and equipment, and it's different than what's on your slide. Uh, this is, uh, two hundred and thirty thousand was for a replacement dump truck, however, we did approve the alternate method for a third-party hauling through the operating budget, so this capital item is no longer needed, so this is definitely a zero.
Whatever.
Why can't we create one in the millions?
But what you do have in your packet, um, which is, um, for vehicle replacement, so that's, I don't know, when that, for general services, when that would be covered? Probably a different time.
Probably a different.
Anyway, it's there.
The two thirty, eliminate.
Eliminate the two thirty, yeah, cor- correct, that's, that is the zero.
And these are somewhere else or no?
That's under general services, yeah, vehicle replacements for L W P C D.
So it's not here, not here, just, yeah.
Yeah.
Two thirty-nine?
It's on the next page.
Got you, so this is, so this one's.
Right, operating budget, we agreed to do a contracted haul.
Right, because at the time, I had to, I had to show both of them, because we didn't know which figure we were gonna go, so that's why it's in the capital now, but. And that's all we have, unless there's any other questions.
I have two quick questions.
Sure.
Is that all right?
Yep.
Um, you have two big items in, in five years out. One is a fourth main rehabilitation for eighty, eight, maybe six hundred thousand dollars. And the other is twenty million dollars for plant upgrade. If, if, if the WPCA comes to talk to us, can they just talk about what those are likely, you know, to entail and how realistic they are, et cetera, et cetera? Because those are big numbers.
Yeah, I, I can tell you right now, the authority doesn't need to. I put those in there as a placeholder. Because at some point, with the capacity evaluation, we may determine that we're gonna need an increase in capacity and another plant upgrade for that. So I had to put some type of a number, we came up with a figure, a, a figure for that. It's just a placeholder, just to get it in, into the budget, so we can keep our eyes open and be aware that we need to do something out here. Um, the other item was for the force main rehabilitation. As you know, we had the bypass emergency.
Yeah.
Um, as part of the, um, INI study, we're also gonna be looking at the, the force mains out there too, to determine, uh, the quality, you know, their condition as well, so. We'll have a better understanding. If we have to replace that same force main that ruptured all the way, um, through, we budgeted about eight point six million just for that one force main. And that's why I just, just.
Is there some way to get a handle on whether or not there's other issues with that? I, I don't really know, I mean, that, that's not my expertise, but is there some way to begin putting some money in to test to see if we've got potential other issues with that or we just?
Well, like I said, that's part of the INI study, so there.
INI will be part of the force main, part of that.
That part, that study, uh, they're actually gonna take that piece of pipe that was ruptured, um, we're gonna get that analyzed to see if that was an internal or external.
And then, two other things, I'm not, I know we're not supposed to do this, but we had a WPCD generator of, for a hundred fifty thousand in twenty-two that was never used. Are we ever gonna use that or is that something that come off?
We've been talking about how, um, internally and trying to figure out if there is a need or not. That is something that's, that's debatable, I guess.
I'm just asking, because.
The prior superintendent had asked for that, um, we're not sure it was a number that is enough to get what they even need, so right now, there's no plan to spend it. Again, it's not money.
That number is actually less than what is, what it costs.
Probably not enough if we really did one, but I think, again, now that Dave's in charge, if she's reading.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good one, because that's something that we have been talking about, trying to figure out if we could even reallocate that money for something else down the road.
Good question. Question, um, since you were just talking about that, the pipes, um, the average age of our sewer pipes in our town, I mean, how many of them are clay versus? Do you, do you have an idea of that and what's the lifespan of these? So are we getting near the end of the lifespan on some of these pipes that we're gonna have to replace them soon or? I know that's what the INI is probably gonna help us, but.
We actually do have a good handle of, of the older vitrified clay pipes in town, and, and most of it is in the Elmwood area.
Okay.
Um, but, once you get to newer pipes of the, the plastic, that, that should last an extremely long time.
Okay, so, so, but you have an idea of the age of these pipes and, and the clay?
Yes.
The clay ones last fifty years maybe and the plastic lasts a hundred years?
Well, back in the day, they were supposed to last forever, but that didn't happen.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. So yeah, that's, that's part of the study as well, to determine.
Any more questions from council members? I have a few members of the public here, I know, I assume a couple of you guys are here to talk Park and Rec, I think, but, um, and Karen, if you're here to talk, speak to something with WPCD, feel free for a few minutes.
I'd like to say sure, thank you.
We all, you can also speak at our public hearing, uh, at the town council meeting, regular town council meeting as well. I wanted to just recognize you guys that you're here.
Well, I've been going to their meetings for the past few months and have been very interested, I feel like I've learned a lot. And I think that Dave is doing a great job, um, trying to get a handle on everything that's going on there. And I think his plans, I wanna say they sound excellent to me. I'm not an expert, but just based on what I've learned, I know they're trying to get a handle on the inflow, infiltration, because, all right, so, what I've heard is last year, we exceeded our permit almost every day. And once you start doing that too much, DEEP comes down and says, well, you need a new plant. And so, and our plant was supposed to last twenty years and was built in like twenty thirteen, and so, at ten years, we're looking at the possibility because, as you heard, the, the, uh, gallons per day have gone up to like seventeen million gallons per day or fifteen after the big rains. And, so the goal really is to get a handle on what we really should be processing and how much is the rainwater and the unauthorized stuff coming in, and if they can get it figured out, maybe we don't need a new plant. So, I think, everything I've heard from this inexperienced person makes a lot of sense.
Great, thank you. Do you wanna move on to Park and Rec next or sure?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking at Dan over there, please. Come on over, John.
Yeah, you're, you're stuck.
Paul, Paul works has.
I'll be here.
You're stuck, you know, Paul works has about twenty projects.
I should have brought up.
Move on. Yeah. Um, thank you, John.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Two forty-one. Yep, go ahead, two forty-one.
A mix.
I was ready to move quickly.
Some needs and wants.
Um, it's simple, it's simple.
Yeah, yeah, so you wanna, so there's four projects in the, in the first year, you'll see there on page two forty-one. Um, the first being Skate Park, actually, John and I were just this morning.
So, yeah, Skateport Skateboard Park and BMX was built and installed in summer of two thousand and four. So we've been watching it, when we do the park audits with H D Seeger every summer, you know, the cracks and the chasms are getting larger and larger and you could fill those, and then, you know, a couple of months later, they go away and it's just, it needs new surface. So in keeping with all the different upgrades that are going on at Bartlam Park, it certainly begs for some attention because the park does get a lot of use, more BMX scooters than skateboard parks from my visual, uh, vantage point from across the street on a daily basis. Um, so this number actually represents, it's a hundred and ten thousand dollars. Eighty-eight of it is the uninstall and reinstall, the uninstall of the equipment that's there once the surface gets redone, and then the reinstall of the old equipment back in its place. And then if approved, I did per, I did look into purchasing some additional ramps on the east side that will mesh with the ramps that we already have from American Ramp Company.
That's right. So you will notice, this one way, you look a little confusing, because you'll see there's a lower amount there and town manager recommended, if you go back to the first page.
Yep.
Um, that is because, um, when taken in, in concert with other projects, which we will review in the Public Works Capital project, um, and as I think we've discussed, certainly when we've had visits at Bartlam Park. With the Bartlam Park South coming online and all the brand-new pavement associated for parking and, and the areas associated with that project, we have two other projects and now three if you include Skate Park. Skate Park is a, the two minutes concrete pad, these are released on. That if we did all at once, we could get favorable pricing to do the entrance drives to Bartlam, because they're in rough shape. Curbing needs to be fixed in many places or replaced. Uh, the pool parking lot, uh, almost at a minimum needs to be paved because it's gonna be divided right in half, with the nice new, almost in half, about one-third of it's gonna look brand-new. And the rest goes right up against the existing, which just makes it look even older. So the idea would be, uh, if the council supports the, the project for paving the entrance drives and parking at sort of Bartlam Park North, if you will, pool parking lot, we could pick up and for really great cost savings, you'll see it's only, as John said, that amount to replace the equipment is eighty-eight thousand. So of this appropriation request now at a hundred and ten, that's about twenty-two thousand dollars to pave that asphalt area as we're saving. As opposed to doing, you saw the initial request, I think that was in the hundred and thirty thousand dollars, if it was a standalone project where, you know, because the contractor's there though, they can pick up all of the work at once and you get much more favorable pricing with the asphalt, so. And you would need to get all three of these at once.
I'm a little confused. I don't know if everyone understood that. So right now, you're talking about a concrete surface for this, for the skate park.
It's bituminous.
It's bituminous. Just eliminate all that, because.
Still is, right.
It's bituminous con, it's just.
Correct.
It's bituminous concrete. It's not.
Yeah, ignore, right. So the original request, I, yeah, the project title says concrete surface. If you look at the detail sheet on the back of that page, it says post-tension would be a hundred eighty-five thousand, concrete option, one fifty, asphalt, one thirty. That was as the request came to me. Once I got this request, combined it with the other Public Works request for Bartlam Park paving, we came up with a twenty-two thousand dollar option. It's not on that sheet, but it is reflected in that price.
So what are you talking, for the one-ten, are you saying you'd be able to accomplish in that short?
So if you look on that page two forty-two, in the middle, it has the summary of cost components. Basically, replace that one eighty-five with twenty-two thousand dollars. And you get a total of a hundred and ten. What John is saying is uninstalling, reinstalling of equipment is thirty thousand. And if we added the additional ramp components that he was proposing, that's fifty-eight thousand. So it brings the total project to a hundred and ten thousand, as opposed to two seventy-three.
But then you're talking about additional paving in other places as well. You're talking about.
Yep, and different projects, different projects, which you'll get to when we.
Okay, so this is still just this, okay.
Right, the idea would be same vendor, but three projects. They just hopefully are able to go into the project with all three.
I got a broker wrist on that, years ago. My oldest moment is parents, because I'm gonna make her put her wrist guards on, so. Anyway.
We need, we need, there's some cracks in the asphalt right now.
It wasn't the asphalt.
Sorry, Johnny. So, so we're going, so is this going from a concrete to an asphalt pad?
No, it's already asphalt. It would just be, it would be an asphalt without cracks in it.
Gotcha, okay, so it is, it's already asphalt. For some reason, I thought it was, for some reason, I thought it was concrete.
And then two years ago, I did some warranty repairs to the ramps that are there now, and they're in pretty good shape.
That's what I was gonna ask. So the, I haven't used a skateboard park in a couple of years. What condition they were in, are they, are they indecent?
Yes.
He's done, and we've, we, Public Works came out and filled the cracks, I mean, do with crack seal or things like that. As you can imagine, it only is as good, as soon as you have a hot summer and a cold winter, it's already, there's a divot there and it can form a bump.
Because I remember when the.
Scooter goes over.
That first came in, and we had it fenced in, we had somebody there, had to wear helmets and everything else. And I was scared that somebody was gonna get seriously injured and, and it was gonna cost the town.
In common, a lot of towns did the same thing when they first had skate parks, but it's, it's really more.
We John's daughter.
I mean, it's, you know, it is an acceptable risk. I think it's also one of those, for a while, at least when I came here and when John came here soon after, there was still a fence on one side. Of course, you kind of beg the question, why is there still just one fence of a four-sided area? So we had that removed, I mean, just. It's better visually anyway, and it's more appealing. But now, I think a lot of towns did that when they first ventured into skate parks. They fenced them and they tried to guard them, and then you realize, pretty soon, it just becomes a, it's like a piece of playground equipment. It's using your own risk. You know, it's, it's very, it's very popular.
Is this paving scheduled, are you scheduling this, like, if it's approved, for late summer?
This would be one of the projects in this whole Capitol Budget, especially given the timing of Bartlam Park South. That it's advantageous that we're talking about it here in, in late May and June. If we got approval to move forward, we would do that paving this fall. Whereas other projects sometimes take another couple of years or two.
Because you get the contractors in the park to just add this in somehow, so.
You know, it's theoretically, we would, we'd need a bid waiver from the council.
No, the, the project itself would be through the state bid.
Oh, yeah, we go through state.
Be the vendor off the state bid.
So you take a completely different contractor in to do this one?
For the.
For the, for this.
For the access drives and the.
No, so we would work off the state bid. TILCON does reclamation off the state bid, and then there's a separate state bid for in-place asphalt. The con, TILCON would do all of the paving component. With the price that we got, we envisioned actually Public Works stripping the existing asphalt off, prepping the surface. And then when TILCON comes in to do the main drives and parking lots, the price that we have for them would be for them to overlay the, the, that area. And we'd be paying the cost per ton, which they are able to give us a favorable, favorable rate on, because they would add that into the quantity that they're hauling to the park. So because we're, we're adding it in with TILCON to a larger scale mobilization, they're able to give us a favorable fee.
That's great.
Good, all right, that's Skate Park.
Next one. Park and open space improvements. The first one, so it's a total of a hundred thousand dollars, broken up into little pots. The first one would be Cheshire Park. Have you been following the news and some of our rec commission notes and minutes? Been working with some Cheshire residents on a frisbee disc golf course at Cheshire Park, just off the trail system. I've been working closely with the Environment Commission, the Environmental Planner, the Town Planner. We've had multiple walks out there, and the Cheshire residents and the course designer have been working on laying out the course, the eighteen holes, with inside the wooded area of the, of the park. Some of my friends have a park map, if you want to see the layout. That's important, if not. The cost of a, of a whole eighteen-hole disc golf course is twenty-five thousand dollars. It includes signed kiosks, tee pads, baskets, and the small fee for course design.
So as John said, you have two, two residents, any questions are here?
Yes, yes.
Is the entrance to that near, near where the pickleball courts are? Is that where the first hole would be?
So the first hole would be.
Would you be going upwards of now?
Yes, up towards the gold pasture, yes.
I have a map. I'm glad to share it. This is a preliminary design, and we've been working on it over three visits to the park. And there are lines drawn, approximate locations numbered one through eighteen, with either a letter T for the tee box, which consists of a three-foot by six-foot platform. It could be made of pavers, concrete, or wood, and then a basket, which is essentially just a pole in the ground. So here are the pickleball courts, tennis courts here, the pavilion here. You walk up. This is up on the hill. It goes across along this area. Down here, we've stayed a full lot away from the lots here. You would come back up. It goes through the course. The main trail is here. And we've made sure to keep plenty of sight lines, so that, you know, there's no risks and, you know, we're not interfering with the trails. So for example, this is on one side of the trail, this is on another side of the trail. This is right, the tee pad would be right near the trail, so there's no risk there. And then you would follow the course, you know, from one to the other. They're numbered this way, they could be numbered differently. And you end up coming across back here, eighteen. It's a, you know, again, the, we have, Sam, another Cheshire resident is running a Facebook page. We've got over two hundred people on a Facebook page who've expressed an interest in volunteering. What a disc golf course consists of is going from one spot to another spot, and in the middle, sort of creating, blazing what, in essence, is a wider trail. So I got into this because I hike. So you're hiking from one to the other, throwing a disc. So it's hiking. I lost almost twenty pounds in the process.
So there is, so there is sort of a fairway from tee to green?
Yes, it's, it's a wider trail.
Is that, and that is not gonna impact the current trail system at all, is what you're saying?
Correct.
Kind of building around the trail system.
Right.
Is there gonna be tree removal?
So the trees serve as obstacles within the course, so.
So you're not removing any trees?
Well, we would remove not large trees. We would remove smaller trees. And we're working with the Karen from the Environmental Commission on, you know, there, there's a, there may be some chestnuts out there that we're, that we're aware of, and she spotted them for us, so we're very, you know, conscious. We're gonna conscious of that. We're gonna go out there with her again and make sure that where we essentially are blazing these trails, which mostly includes like smaller trees and undergrowth, so it'll be creative trail.
Like brush clearing?
Brush clearing, brush clear, brush clearing and smaller trees. So the larger trees are what we shape the fairway around. They serve as the obstacles. Disc golf is not like traditional golf. Traditional golf, ball golf, we call it, is wide-open fairways. That's not what this is.
Thank God.
That's not, that's not anything what this is.
I've still been able to find woods.
So.
But the physics is still the same. You can't throw a frisbee through a tree.
Right.
No less than you can golf through a tree. So I was just curious. I, I would love to take a walk through and just see. How much, how, I mean.
Yeah, I wanna say, I mean, Parks and Rec has been talking about this for two years, more, maybe.
It started in Mixville.
And it started in Mixville, and now they've left to Cheshire Park.
Going through there and just having all the, you know, their activity, yes.
Yeah, and I know you, I've seen you multiple times at meetings, and I appreciate all the energy and time you put into this. Your presentations have been exemplary with Parks and Rec, and all the folks at Parks and Rec have been asking these questions. I appreciate the fact that you've been working with the Environment Commission as well. I know Karen and Mike Lynn have walked out with you to look at the course. And so this has all been vetted over significantly by, I think, all interested parties, and I just, again, I appreciate your time and energy.
Certainly, anybody that does wanna go out there, we certainly let us know. I'll take you out there.
I, I trust Karen's input. If she sees, if you see any true destruction and environmental impact, you would let us know. Okay, thank you. Oh, we went for a walk, okay, and it was, I had gone out, we'll say last year, and came across chestnut, American chestnut. Believe it or not, sap, secrets, took pictures, sent a twig out to the headquarters. They do genetic testing. They said, yes, this is American chestnut. And there was, there were both of them here. There were more. Once you know what to look for, it's relatively easy to find them. So there they were. We had also gotten a report from Connecticut Autobahn. They do a report every year, the state of the birds. And they had a section this year, that was last year's, about trails in the woods and how they affect birds, like brown-nesting birds, et cetera, et cetera. How you should not have them too close together. You should stay on one side of the stream. And so I shared that. I believe I shared that.
Yeah, we did, we did.
And they took that into consideration. We went for a walk.
The Scarlet Tanager.
The Scarlet Tanager. There's an area where the Scarlet Tanager sings, and where they sing is where they nest. And then there's another area where there's a lot of spring wild flappers. And he said, not knowing this, he said, "We could put a basket there." And I said, "Please don't. There are all these spring wild flappers there." And I, I haven't been there, but I assumed they went around there.
We did.
So, but since then, the chestnut trees have leafed out, and next, we can go out somewhere and I can show you.
So this was, they just finished this course layout, so the next step would to be, was, we were planning on going out there with Mike Lynn and Mike Stroll again. So we planned that, if anybody else would like to come along.
Yeah, just send out a, send out an invitation or a, you know, an update as to when it's gonna be, and anybody that can make it, goes.
Do you have stakes where the baskets are gonna go already, or?
So we've placed little flags, little wire flags, and in, I think we hit all the places. And they're marked with numbers that should match those, but as, you know, they, they may not, because we, as we've gone through, we've said, "Oh, we better go from this to that, then to that to there." So I think the numbers line up.
Okay.
But, yeah, there are flags in the places where we expect the teams.
And any property butters, they try to stay and go parallel or away from, so there's no direct shots going back to someone's backyard on that one stretch there, on the south side?
You, you said that this, this is about twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, that's, I said, some majority of it's to buy the baskets and install them. But in terms of ongoing maintenance of this, is there a lot of ongoing maintenance? Like, if, you know, during certain summer, things start growing like crazy, you know, does park and, or Public Works have to get out there and start cutting down things? Or is it just, because people are walking on it, it's just gonna stay mad at them?
So, so, so the latter part of what you said is true, and the second part of what you said is, where I play right now is at Left Berry Park in Warrenford. And they have, there are a core of people who volunteer to do the work. That park is kept up by volunteers. And, and John has some experience there.
That was an agreement we had fifteen years ago when we built it, when I was there.
Yeah. Now, to the extent there are, you know, currently, right, there, if there are tree falls and there's a hazard, right, I think Public Works comes out and addresses it. But in terms of regular maintenance, you know, to the course, it's really by the, sort of like Little League or the, the youth sports. There's a group of people who are involved who take care of it.
Yeah, but the problem is, we found out that some of the parents weren't taking the best care of the field, so that we had to give it back to Public Works. So that's what I, I just wanna make sure that, you know, I don't know at the beginning of the season if they have to go and get the course all set up or, and clean it up, or.
Yeah, there's no, there's no setup. The court, the, the disc golf, the beauty of disc golf, again, it's hiking.
Do it in the winter.
Do it in the winter, you do it in the summer. I go because, you know, you get deer coming off the trail in the back at Left Berry. You get the woodpeckers. You get so much, it's, it's a, it's hiking. So you're doing it because you wanna be out in the woods in nature, but you were doing it with a purpose.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure there wasn't any ongoing maintenance issues that we're gonna have to.
So I'm just curious, as I look at this, I mean, you, you've got these, these holes crossing wetlands and going up very, very steep slope. People actually, what they do, they trounce through the wetlands and they walk up these steep slopes.
So there are, there are paths in here. There's a bridge right here. Right here, there's a bridge. There's an existing bridge right here. So you would come down here, you'd walk across the bridge, come over here, go up and around. Then from here, you would walk across the bridge and go up to here. That, that's, that's, there's.
And going right directly onto those steep slopes is normal for this type of activity?
These slopes are relatively, compared again to other courses I've played, these slopes are relatively minor. Again, it's, it's a hike. You, you, you do it because you want the hike. And so these slopes are, are what I look for in a course, and what our course designer looks for. The, the elevation changes are really a part of what makes a, a great disc golf course. No one wants to throw on a big open field.
What about, like, management and access of, of use of the course? And I mean, people aren't gonna make that tee time, right?
No.
I mean, you just go and use it whenever you wanna use it.
Just go and use it. Some people start at the back nine, some will start, you know.
You guys are talking about. Where you want, do whatever you want, and go anytime you want.
You can do a loop of four or five balls and then go.
And, and, and the thing about disc golf is unlike ball golf, ball golf takes, I guess, three hours or something like that?
Maybe a little more.
Yeah, I can do.
Four and a half.
I play.
I play eighteen in that Warrenford place in one hour, and so you're in and out. And so there's not a lot of, it doesn't bring a lot of people to the area all at once. People are in and out very quickly. And, and some people might just play five, or some people may, whatever you wanna do.
What about the refreshment cart, drags around?
That's next year's budget.
That's what destruction's for, right?
I do, I guess, looking at this, it's interesting, because I never see how much, how much space there is for this. I mean.
There's, there's about seventy acres back there. So this is not a, this is not invasive and taking up a lot of space. This is not affecting people's ability to walk with their dogs back there. This is not taking down big, beautiful trees and affecting, you know, this is people who like to go out and hike. And there's a lot of studies. In Bristol, they did actually install a disc golf course to clean up garbage and people idling, idling with their vehicles and doing things that you don't want to happen at parks. So people who go out, they love the environment, they pick up trash. They don't do the negative things associated.
My other question is, do they, do they make game improvement frisbees? That's what I wanna know. Something's gonna have to affect my slice. Something's gonna save my slice.
They make weighted frisbees and.
They, there are. All different kinds of discs. There's putters, mid-range drivers.
I was just gonna say, the, the affinity group that comes out and manages this is very similar to the mountain biking group that'll manage the, you know, trail system. Once we do that too, it's a very similar kind of mindset.
Slice them off to the right, that's for sure.
Don't they have days where this is really heavily used by bikes?
Not just a park.
No, that's another issue, yeah. But they're not doing that anymore.
Well, not this year anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It could come back, but not this year.
Because I remember.
The cycle cross in November.
Yeah.
We use this for, Cheshire Junior Football used this a lot for practice during a certain part of the year. And I remember there being a couple of really large biking events taking place.
Yeah, that was some of the cross, but they're not, they're not, they're not happening on right now.
Okay.
And, and football's gonna be using this less because of the new.
Yeah, there'll be a Bartlam Park and hopefully.
So there's less strain on this.
They're gonna be practicing on the turf?
They're, they're gonna be using more of the turf and less of this, the practice field.
They're gonna be moving their operation this summer, this summer to fall.
Lights were a big reason. I remember, lights being a big reason why they moved to Cheshire Park.
Correct. And we're hoping the timing of the restroom building and the hookup of all the lights and transformer and all that will be, will coincide with, by September.
September. And also the, the turf field is probably a lot less weather.
Correct. That gives us some better flexibility for fall, softball, baseball, that type of. That gives us some better flexibility for fall, softball, baseball, that type of stuff.
You think you could have this in by fall?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Let's Public Works office.
David wants the sun up already.
Yeah, I know, right? He's going to get his clubs.
Exactly.
Just start practicing at Leftbury.
Exactly, yeah. And it's what I passed that, I never, never really knew what that was.
And Thor, north of us in Solington, that's the course that's actually the most visited in Connecticut, actually. And that's a really beautiful course that they take care of. And there's the same, there's work groups, there's volunteers who take care of it.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
Get the green jacket.
Thank you very much.
Exactly.
All right, so in the interest of time, is, is, is that the entire item here?
No, so the second part of that stain at Cheshire Park would be the pickleball. There's been a, you know, a movement and request to, to turn the remaining tennis courts to pickleball.
All of them?
There has been, and I've been talking with the main, or the chief organizer of the Team Reach page, it's a public page, that they have meetups and schedules and postings. They're okay with turning one tennis court into two pickleball courts, and that's the twenty-one thousand dollars for new Neptos, color coding the court and pickleball lines, and still preserving two tennis courts. That would be my recommendation. I've received calls where, why can't we have pickleball courts on the south end of town? I've had calls, please don't do anything more for pickleball. I've had calls, could you please put lights on the tennis court for the tennis players? So there's been a whole bunch of requests and things. The majority has been, can we squeeze a couple more pickleball courts?
You could fit two pickleball courts in one tennis court?
Yep. So you can almost fit four, but to play regulation or if you were going to do a tournament, like the Koanis are going to be doing a tournament in October, late October, I would rather keep it uniform with the other six courts, so you have eight, you know, tournament style courts, you know, and not get crazy and try to slam everything in, and now you have, there's balls and activity going all over the place. And then you change, you would change, if you would put more on that one court, now you have tennis going north and south, and then pickleball would be going east and west, and it would be a nightmare. So now everything stays in a northwest, a north and south orientation.
You need to set, you don't need to separate those courts from each other, right? You wouldn't need to move a fence?
No, you could actually use the tennis net that's there as the separator. A lot wild about it because the net is like waist high, so if you're going to go back and play on a wall, and you're not savvy, you could be going over the fence. So we may have to do something there.
That's, I guess, my question, do you need to segregate those, the pickleball, the new pickleball court from the remaining two courts?
No, no, because you're, you're going to be going in that north-south orientation, so it'd be like you're playing tennis with somebody else.
And any, and any discussion with converting any of the ones at Cheshire High School?
Oh, they would love it, but it's all the high school, and there's a lot of...
Yeah, and that's just... It's very loud.
Yeah.
Pickleball's loud.
Very loud.
Is that the people who are playing it?
That's the issue, no, it's the sound, the sound.
I've already had too many people coming to me, don't do it in South Rolling Acres.
Yeah, I was going to say, that, that, that court right there on South Rolling Acres is like...
Interesting.
Yeah, it's like a lot of pong.
It's plastic ball and it's paddle.
I've never heard all about it, but I've never actually seen it being played. I know it's a craze, but I just haven't...
You're going to get hooked as soon as you go out.
That's what I've heard.
You said it's twenty-one grand to convert?
Twenty-one thousand. Neptos, color coding the court and pickleball lines.
Which converts one to two.
Convert one tennis to two pickleball. Barnum Park, we're looking to add some low-rise bleachers, four sets, and then four sets of player benches with a little shelving that goes behind it for their bag or whatever to keep it up off the turf. That amount is twenty-six thousand and twelve thousand six hundred for the player benches. And then something that I've been talking to Sean about, and I know that we helped the grounds crew and Dan's guys, is trying to come up with some miscellaneous information signage that's uniform to all the parks, so that we can refer to certain common ordinances and things that just constantly occur at the parks that become a problem because there is not a sign for someone to refer to, like a police officer or anybody else that's, that's doing any kind of, you know, organizing any activities at the park. So we would work with the Rec Commission, come up with some sort of universal language for all the parks near the pavilion and so forth.
Where does, what, the seat bleachers, what are those, are those for the, going around the new, the new field?
So, right, so you'll notice on the south side, if you do another tour of the field, there's a concrete pad poured. We had talked about putting another one on the south side, and then eventually a couple on the north side.
But outside the fence.
Outside the fence.
The player benches go on the turf?
That's correct.
Are there special kind that, that...
Uh, no, there, there are ones that, I mean, you're not installing them into the turf, they're movable, they have...
Similar to what's at the high school.
Yeah.
I thought there was utility issues on the north side. You be able, you sure you were able to get them for the north side?
These are tip and roll, they're tip and roll.
They're very low, they're low rise, they're only like three or four rows, you don't need any handrails, they're long planks that you can fit about seventy-two people on each one.
Are you putting a concrete pad on them for them?
That's what we're going to talk about, yeah.
Does that fit with the gas main and everything that was over there?
That's on the south end, you're talking about the north end.
The north end?
No, the north end, I don't think you'd put a concrete pad, probably be putting them right in the grass.
I don't remember how it looks, did the grass turn out real there?
It's actually, the grass is actually a little higher up there, that it levels out. Probably the best view.
That's fine, I remember, I remember there was some constraints there.
It's also potentially one that, depending on where we end up with the budget for the project, we kept on the shortlist of maybe a little fund the existing capital project as we move along, closer to certainty there.
And then the last two were the parking lot replacement, Cheshire Community Pool, there's that we just talked about. And then the last one is the boiler replacement, which I have a kickoff meeting actually tomorrow with Silver and Petroselli, the consultant that Dan had recommended, that we use to attack the boiler issue that's at the pool.
So I have to ask about the cogen unit, is that going to be part of this, or is that something separate? I know Energy Commission, that's been a recurring concern for them.
Well, I know that, that five-year agreement is up in a couple of months, so I haven't heard anything if the Energy Commission is going to renew that agreement. Hasn't been...
That would be, that would be the year the pool's agreement, the commission, obviously, they made a recommendation to the council for the project, but it becomes equipment on the pool. The cogeneration unit in itself, part of the reason that it's not running is because of the lack of demand caused by the high efficiency boiler being down. While Silver and Petroselli will certainly review the way that the system's plumbed in, that's a freestanding unit from itself that will be, operate under a separate contract for the maintenance. They can look for somebody else to work with if there's a lack of satisfaction with Aegis Energy as a representation. But the, the review of the whole pool facility is part of the scope that's included, and the plumbing and where the communications and call for the heat demand come for the cogeneration unit will be evaluated for the new loop that they're going to establish.
Okay.
And so they're going to look at the whole, the whole facility, the heat load analysis, whether or not there should be a singular one boiler setup to what's there, or a tandem setup, which will have a lead lag and be a little bit even more efficient than what was in place earlier.
Yeah, I think, we talked about that a little bit during the operating budget, that there's some concern that maybe the high efficiency boiler, which is critical for the cogent running, wasn't properly sized for the space there. So again, that's what Silver and Petroselli is evaluating, kicking off tomorrow, and we'll have some better ideas, so that this is a number, a placeholder number of what we think it may cost there, but we'll have better idea what's going to be the design.
Thank you, absolutely.
John, I just have one quick question, because I know a few years back, we had the issue with the liner at the pool, and it wasn't part of the capital budget, we was kind of just thrown on us. Is, now, is that something that you guys have a track on where you will add to the capital budget when it's...
So, yeah, if you could look at page two forty-three, there's some, there's a line that's, that will pick up for the next couple of years, not this year. If you recall, after that incident, the, with the liner failing, Sean allowed me to work with Weston and Sampson, and we got consultants to do, to take a look at the mechanicals and the whole pool, to kind of get like a baseline of all the equipment that's in there. So that, these are some of those things that would be coming off of that recommendation that they had made. Certainly because the pool is operating every day all year long, there are things that will break prematurely, and kind of like with the wastewater treatment plant, there's things that you just, you just don't know that are, that fail, so. But we do kind of have a, you know, our ear to the ground and try to take a look at these things and...
Well, if I recall with the, with the pool liner, I think, I think what was frustrating was that it was getting towards the end of its warranty and nobody had... They said it was leaking before the end of the warranty, and they didn't do anything about it, and then the warranty expired and we had to replace it. So that was something that, you know, because it's, I think it was a ten-year warranty on it or something like that, so we're okay, so you, you guys are on top of that now, so that, that shouldn't happen.
We are now. One of the things, if you remember, we were supposed to address the concrete deck and make repairs and epoxy floor, and we re-appropriated that expenditure for the liner. And then two years ago, we approved a hundred thousand dollars that we're still carrying, and because of this boiler issue from last fall, we haven't done anything with that in case we needed to use those funds or reallocate those or reappropriate those again. So, once we figure out what's happening with the boiler, then we can go and take a look at the deck. The pool is twenty-six years old, the physical plan is twenty-two years operational, so it's, it's getting up there in age.
John, on that same page, the lobby roof, where do we stand with that? What, do we have estimates and...
So we, back in January, we met with three consultants on the boiler, and then another three consultants for the roof. I have to get cracking and getting those consultant reports narrowed down so that we could tackle that, just like we are with the boiler.
I would, if we, if there's any way we could include it in this capital, I'd like to, to steal a line from Miss Kramer, water finds a way, so.
Any more questions for, for John, Park and Rec? So, it's been two hours, we had kind of aggressive agenda, I think, for tonight, which I don't, I don't think we should begin Public Works now, sorry, Dan.
It's all right, I mean, I thought I had the easiest one.
As long as you approve all his requests.
You won't trick us.
Is that how this works?
We're not, we're not on a tight schedule the way we are with the operating budget, so I don't think we have to kind of push through another hour, so I don't think that's really in the best interest of anybody necessarily right now, so if it's, if it's okay with the group, I would say let's end here for the night.
Second.
Yeah, we should, I know one...
I thought you were standing at ten thirty.
So...
Usually, usually.
I'm a little disappointed. I thought, I thought we were getting pizza.
Why did you say pizza?
It's only on Saturdays, it's only on Saturdays.
I don't know if it might be, but it's just, I know it's been a challenge to get schedules together for this round of, meaning that's why we tried to condense it into three, because those are the only dates we can find, we had the poll.
Yeah.
Or is there, we're looking at another date, I assume we're not combining this with the Board of Ed, because that's going to be too much.
No, that'll, that should be a standalone.
So, I don't know if it's worthwhile to go around and try to schedule things now, or if you'd rather us do the poll again, or if you're looking into July.
Well, as you mentioned, we maybe could hit some of this at the, at the regular council meeting.
So maybe we could discuss that agenda, right, if we have a later agenda for June eleventh, our council meeting, we'd be able to pick up some of this, if we did it, piggyback on that meeting, depends on what people, just trying to be respectful of everyone's time, though.
Yeah.